Good evening. Welcome to the April 2nd, 2014 Board of Education meeting. We were in executive session since 6 o'clock discussing an individual personnel contractual matter. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just for all.
We are being videotaped. If anyone does come up and speak when it's open, mic time, you can come up to the microphone and announce yourself. Also, are there any participation in government students here? Okay. The requirement is that you stay till 9 o'clock. If the meeting is still going on at 9, we'll take a break and you can come up and we'll have sign out sheets for you up here. And if you have a sheet of paper that needs to be signed by one of the board members, we'll be here to do that. If by chance we get done before 9, you'll be able to leave at that time, but again, you need to come up and sign out. We'll start with introductions.
Lynn Lenhart.
Joanne Cunningham.
Kate Navarro.
Jody Monroe.
Tom Douglas.
Matt Downey.
Michael Cooper.
Diane Stever.
And Judy Kehoe.
And Dr. Charmaine Singer is home ill tonight. Approval of the minute of the March 19th, 2014 regular board meeting. Have a motion?
Second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item number three, Student Senate Report. Do we have a representative from the Student Senate here tonight? Okay, great.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Anna Kryberg. I'm the Vice President of Student Senate. We actually just had our meeting today, so what we're talking about doing now is with the money that we earned from Mr. Bethlehem, trying to set up some sort of fundraiser to give back to the community mostly. We're looking outside of our school. We're looking at beyond fundraisers of doing sort, we were talking about doing sort of like a talent show of some sort maybe. We were also looking at volunteering at the Ronald McDonald House after school. We were looking at tutoring programs we can become involved with at the Plumeri Center. And really focusing on now that we've done a bunch of school events after Spring Dodgeball, how do we want to give back to the community with the money we've earned? We are going to be in the process of looking at Senate scholarship applicants and deciding who we give the scholarship to very soon. And that's mostly what we've been up to.
Great. Sounds like you've been busy.
Yeah.
Anyone have any questions for Anna?
Can you tell everyone where you're going to college? Because I saw at Panera on Monday and I asked her and she put her deposit down.
Oh, yeah. I got into NYU, so I'm going to NYU.
Congratulations. What are you going to major in?
English and Foreign Relations.
Nice.
Yeah, very excited. Thanks so much.
Good luck. Thank you. Next, the Superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Downey. Tonight is all about instruction and education here at Bethlehem Central, but before we get to those acknowledgements, I wanted to take some time to thank Ms. Judith Kehoe, Mr. Greg Nolte, and a lot of their efforts this year as we attempted to participate in the Utica Mutual School Safety Award. And I'm pleased to report that this past week, the district was presented with a platinum level award for school safety. It's the first time we've participated. The highest level is titanium. This is just below that. And I know they did a tremendous amount of work throughout the year to go through the surveys and participate. So, thank you, Ms. Kehoe. And the district has been presented with a plaque for this that we'll put into the board office as well. So, we'd like to present that to the board.
In addition, we have a couple of great opportunities over the past week for outstanding
performances here. First and foremost, I had the opportunity to go over to Slingerland's musical. I know Mrs. Bonnequest is back here. For Night, The Castle Rocked and the Students, the staff made an outstanding musical event in memory for all the students at Slingerland, so congratulations. In addition, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Yero, the Dashous, as well as the entire cast and crew of the production here at the high school of Damn Yankees. That concluded this past week, and it was a wonderful tribute, depending on which side of the Boston-New York Yankees issue you are in Albany, I know that's sort of a dividing line, but it was an outstanding effort by all of our students to perform at the level that they do and provide this service to our community and surrounding neighbors. So, thank you for everything they've done. Just so that you know, BCHS students in advanced filmmaking will be hosting a filmmaking festival tomorrow here at the high school auditorium. And that festival will be held on April 3rd from 9:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. and will include keynote presentations. So, we just want to make that announcement. I know the students have worked very hard. There's about 65 students that are engaged in this project, and they will really be working hard to display some of their wares and their learnings over this time. So, we want to thank them. But tonight is, as we said, the instructional portion of the budget. We also wanted to honor some of the extracurricular and instructional components that we do day in and day out throughout the school year with our parents, our community members, and most importantly, our instructional staff who I know are here tonight. And I want to first start by talking about our student achievement in Odyssey of the Minds. And I'd like to ask Mr. Kay if he'd come forward and introduce his teams for the board at this point.
And as Dr. Douglas said, tonight we are here to recognize our many Odyssey of the Mind teams throughout the district. At Hammagill, we had three teams who went up in early March to represent our school and the district at the Region 7 competition that was held at Shenandoah High School. Pleased to announce tonight that two of our teams came in first place, and then will be heading to Binghamton for the state competition on April 12th. And we also had one team finish in second place. So, I'd like to congratulate the students. And when I call your name, would you like them to come up front?
One team at a time.
One team at a time.
As well as their coaches.
As well as the coaches, okay. First team, they came in first place with problem one in Division 1. Their problem was called the driver's test. The team designed a futuristic flying car to travel a course, to complete tasks, to pass a driver's test. So, the following students, please come on up. Kiki Baum, Lily Beider, Charlie Blanchard, Claire Peretta, Caroline Riley, and Teddy Our next team came in first place, problem five, Division 1, with the problem seeing is believing. Team created and presented an original performance about a community that feels threatened by something in a location that they have never visited before. Please come on up. Eliza Cotton, Megan Dellenbaugh, Abe Kaufman, Nathaniel Koplick, Dewey Mung, Claire Smith, and Daniel Joe. It's How We Rule. The team recreated a king's court from history and made their own royal court that will issue a decree that changes in everyday behavior for the people in the kingdom. I'd like to recognize the following students. Sage Obernasser, Henry Reichman, Caitlin Roddy, Ethan Rosenblum, Beth Turnage, Juliette Van Leuven, and Emma Van Leuven. Come on up, please. Congratulations to our team from Hammagill for representing us so well.
I'm very proud to share with you tonight that we had two teams that competed at Shenandoah. Both of our teams landed in second place. Our first team that was in second place for problem one, Division 1, includes Jack DeSanti, Caleb Els, Ben Goldberg, Zach Price, and Nick Watson. Congratulations. Can we have their coach come up also? Don't be shy. Our next team also earned second place for problem five, Division 1, and that team included Elliot Barrett, Peyton Cardinal, Isabella Cometti, Ray Hutton, Michael O'Shaughnessy, Madison Sinick, and Sophia Sokka.
And our final team will be from the middle school tonight, so I'll ask Principal Pluggins to come forward, but before he gets here, I want to also recognize the hard work that Betsy Boon stopped, which coordinates the Odyssey of the Mind for us this year. But one of the biggest things that Betsy's been proud of this year is in the history of Odyssey of the Minds, we've sent several teams, but we've never had the successes this year that every single team that went placed. And that's a true accomplishment to all the parents, the students, and all the hard work that they've contributed through this time. Thank you for everything.
When I talked to our team, by the way, which our team is our first-place winner, that means they're going to Binghamton in a couple of weeks, they've already been game planning. For those that are not aware, after you do your local presentation, which this year was up at Shenandoah, you're actually, you get your judges' scores, and then you're allowed to go back in and revisit your presentation and polish it up. So, I asked them, are they leaving it alone or are they all set to go? And they said, no, we're going to find 65 points because we know that's the team that got, you know, that we'll be competing with. So, they've been brushing up and they're all ready to go, and good luck to them, obviously, when they get to Binghamton. I almost feel sorry for the other teams because you guys are going to be so strong. So, if you guys would join me, I'm actually, is Jillian here? Okay, so I'm going to say hi to, if you guys would turn around, where's the camera? Right behind you. Just wave to Jillian. Jillian may be watching this at home, so congratulations to Jillian Roder. And then if the other folks that are here would join me up here, we have Anders Baum, Thomas Buffaline, Ben Gravel, Ethan Gravel, Morgan Leonard, Taylor Roddy, and of course, And a special, a special thank you to our parent volunteer coaches as well. Thank you.
I'd like to recognize a couple of other students who have received honors and awards. I'd like to invite our social studies supervisor, Ms. Virginia Scott, to come forward and pose one of her speeches, Kristen Burnes, come up forward and introduce her.
Ms. Burns doesn't really like to be in front of people, so. The Student Inside Albany program is a four-day conference sponsored by the League of Women Voters, and every year, one student from each county in New York State. How many counties in New York State? Anybody know?
62.
Thank you very much. Really? There are 62 counties. Each county gets to select one student to represent their county in Albany, and the kids emerge themselves in local politics and government. And it used to be in April, but you can imagine that they moved it from April because of the budget. Now, it's in May. But this year, and for the last four years, we've had a Bethlehem student representing Albany County, and this year, it's Chelsea Cato. How many people out there have heard the term NHD? Anybody? Thank you in the back. NHD stands for National History Day. It's a competition all across the state. It lasts a year long. And students compete at different levels at different times during the year. And these students we're about to announce went to the regional competition at the New York State Museum, and many of them, out of the 14 groups, five groups are going to be moving on to the state competition in Cooperstown in April. So, we're going to try to call them up one at a time as best we can.
I imagine they're right over here by the project.
Yep. And if anybody's interested in looking at one of the projects, there's one right there by Montana Stone, and I'll start with Montana. So, if you get an idea of what it's like, it's an intensive research project, and kids can enter a bunch of different categories within either the high school level or the middle school level. So, there is a group exhibit, there's an individual exhibit, there's a group paper, there's an individual paper, there's a webpage category, there is an oral performance category, and there's a documentary. And we've had kids go on to the national competition and do very well. So, this is the beginning of it. So, that group, that historian group of Odyssey of the Mind, I'll see you in about two or three years. In first place, she's been doing this since she's been in sixth grade. She won for Love Canal, A Toxic Route to Superfund Legislation, and that's her project over Okay, for our middle school group, again, we had 14 groups enter. Five are going on to the state competition. In first place in the group exhibit, The Taliban and the Deconstruction of Women Rights, is Emily Zildma, Alex Pastrani, and Grace DuVain. I think we're going to take a big group picture afterwards. In first place, Group Website, The Responsibility of Women in Baseball, Tori Dugood, Isabel Armour Garb, and Reagan Earring. In second place, in the paper category, Biological Ownership Rights, Jessica Kemp. In second place in the group exhibit, Jack Kevorkian, The Right to Die, Brett Friedman, Nate Weinstock, and Ryan Davis. In third place in the individual exhibit, The Kent State Shooting, The Responsibility of the National Guard, Shannon Delaney. And a big round of applause for Ms. Burns, who spends endless hours working.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the Board of Education, as you can see from a lot of
the productions tonight on our students, they work very hard and tirelessly, and it's because of their hard work, but it's also because of the staff that give the foundation here at Bethlehem Central, kindergarten through our commencement level at 12th grade. One of the biggest things is that when you're a senior, one of the hardest competitions is the National Merit Scholarship competition. And at this time, I'd like to, as our final report before we end my portion tonight, invite our principal, Mr. Scott Landry, to introduce the National Merit Scholar finalists for Bethlehem.
Don't applaud me. I didn't do anything. So, if I could, I was in front of you a couple of weeks ago when these students made semifinalists, and that was an incredible accomplishment. The fact that they've now moved on to the finalist round is really, really quite a badge of honor. It is unbelievable that they're at this level, so much kudos to them. So, if I could have James Barrier, Julia Champagne, Elizabeth Coltrera, Catherine Colosia, Max Rosenberg, Seth Schoenhaus, and Arya Shi come up, please.
Final thing to note about the National Merit Scholarship is that very few make it to this level across the nation. In the capital region, Bethlehem has one of the highest annual acceptances of finalists in the area. Matter of fact, this group of individuals, seven, is the highest total for any school in the capital area, and it's a testament of the educational programming here at Bethlehem that you help provide. So, thank you as we go through our budget presentation tonight and introduction, and we also try to maintain the excellence of notice Bethlehem. Thanks for tonight's presentations, coming out and receiving our students, but also for listening to us as a board as we go through some of the more difficult challenges ahead. Thank you.
Homework time.
Pig students, this is not your time to leave.
Everyone get some rest. Thank you.
For those that are staying, if you'd like to move closer, that'd be great.
That would be great.
Oh, yes.
Oh, sure. No problem. We've got plenty. Notice the students are saying in the back.
Yep.
Mostly, I mean, they want to see what's on there.
She gets five minutes. You pull the plug, five minutes.
Me?
Yep.
I get five minutes? I can have people there say something.
We'll continue with the rest of the meeting at this time. Next is the Board of Education report. We'll start with you, Lynn.
Well, actually, I want to add to the music program. Dr. Douglas neglected to mention the District-wide Choral Festival, and it was really remarkable having elementary and high school students singing together, and then middle school and high school students all together and really do a great job, and the numbers that are involved is great. And they did a great job. There were a lot of senior citizens in the audience, too, that enjoy coming out to that, as were at, when I went to see Damn Yankees, there were a lot of senior citizens. Certainly, it seemed like on the level of a Broadway play, they did a great job. And then I also was at the night that the castle rocked at Slingerland, and what I like especially about that is that a lot of those students probably, that this will be
to this level across the nation. In the capital region, Bethlehem has one of the highest annual acceptances of finalists in the area. Matter of fact, this group of individuals, seven, is the highest total for any school in the capital area, and it's a testament of the educational programming here at Bethlehem that you helped provide. So thank you as we go through our budget presentation tonight in instruction, and we also try to maintain the excellence of notice Bethlehem. Thanks for tonight's presentations, coming out and receiving our students, but also for listening to us more as we go through some of the more difficult challenges ahead. Thank you.
Homework, kind?
Yeah.
Pig students, this is not your time to leave.
Everyone get some rest. Thank you.
For those that are staying, if you'd like to move closer, that'd be great.
That would be great.
Oh, sure, no problem. We've got plenty.
Mostly, I mean, they want to see what's on there.
She gets five minutes. You pull the plug, five minutes.
Me?
Yep.
I get five minutes? Picking up people that are going to say something.
Next is the Board of Education report. We'll start with you, Lynn.
Well, actually, I want to add to the music program. Dr. Douglas neglected to mention the district-wide choral festival, and it was really remarkable having elementary and high school students singing together, and then middle school and high school students all together, and really do a great job, and the numbers that are involved is great. And they did a great job. There were a lot of senior citizens in the audience, too, that enjoy coming out to that, as were at, when I went to see Damn Yankees, there were a lot of senior citizens. Certainly, it seemed like on the level of a Broadway play, they did a great job. And then I also was at the night that the Castle Rocked at Slerland's, and what I like especially about that is that a lot of those students probably, that this will be their only experience on the stage, when they get to middle school and high school, that might not be their thing, and so at least it's an opportunity to, you know, appear before an audience and get that presence and maybe have a few lines besides the singing and the dancing. So I just wanted to add that, you know, to what you had mentioned earlier about the music. So, and I just think it's wonderful that we can have such a great music and art program here at, you know, in the school district. Many school districts have had to cut these, and I think studies have shown that they, that these programs all help to improve student achievement, and I think it's terrible when you get to that point where you do have to cut these type of programs. So, so I'm glad that we have a very strong program.
Joanne, Kate?
I would just like to publicly thank the board for being kind and accommodating to me with my son's injury and being bedridden for the next six weeks, and I do appreciate it. You guys have been great. I've been keeping up with everything. Haven't been around, but I will be at the meetings from now on, and I did want to publicly thank you all for being very kind.
Lynn, did you have some more? Thank you.
Well, I was, I'm wearing red because I'm kind of furious at how the budget turned, state budget turned out. I just thought that this year was going to be the year that we would actually get an appreciable amount of aid. I'm happy that a lot of the highest need districts, the ones that maybe have cut programs like art, music, sports, whatever, did receive more aid, but I really felt that we also deserve to receive more, and we're still, as people are touting about how much is being spent on education, we're still giving back or not receiving, I should say, in the gap elimination adjustment, we're still taking care of the state's fiscal issues. And I think it's still 3.1 million that we will not receive as a result of that, but of course, that doesn't make the newspapers. We just have to sit here and, you know, make cuts or not be able to add the things that we really want to do. So I'm really kind of frustrated with that. I know that there have been articles, and I'm not going to give analysis of the, of the budget, but I was disappointed. I mean, there were some good things, but there are not enough good things.
Anyone else saying anything? No? Okay. Next is our presentation. We'll have a presentation on the proposed 2014-15 instructional staffing and programs. Dr. Douglas, are you starting, or is Jody?
Yeah, just trying to get it ready. Actually, going to move.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. Tonight, we can sort of wrap up our major presentations on the 2014-15 budget development. Tonight's presentation, as long as I can get through, we'll go over an agenda of reviewing the current budget development, sort of what Ms. Lenhart has already discussed in a way, as well as giving a state aid update. Then we will go into the main component tonight, the instructional budget, and then we'll wrap up with some discussions with the board on some decisions to consider. As an administrative staff, we, we've made some decisions to a point that we could make some closer recommendations so that the board can have discussions on providing us final direction to move forward with any future meetings if necessary. And so as we start off today, we started off our budget in February, and we started off with a certain amount of expenditure, a certain amount of revenue, and a certain amount of gap with the information that we knew at the time. So the budget is an ever-evolving state of flux as we go through the budget negotiations at the state capitol and as well as our other presentations, such as this night, we went over transportation, and we also were able to identify some key revenue that we could claim, that at the end, budget to budget, we would at this point in time have a $93.4 million expenditure side and a revenue side projected at 88.7. That left a gap of about 4.6 million, and it's down at the bottom on each of these slides, we'll just, I'll say the same thing over and over, so I'll only say it once. We knew going into the budget, we had a possible revenue range on a levy between 0 and 1.915 million if we stay at the maximum allowable tax levy, which our governor proposes is the appropriate levy for all districts to move forward their education program in New York State. However, if we went over that amount, we would require a supermajority of our community to pass. So that's the range that we start with. And then we also have our fund balance to use. We have been regularly using 1.75 million. Last year, we said we should start stepping down off of it. We were lucky not to have any reductions, and we stretched that a little bit last year. So we're also addressing that in this year's budget. Then we went to our special education presentation, as well as our technology infrastructure presentation, and at the start of that night, we had a certain expenditure, a certain revenue, and a certain gap. Throughout our presentation, there were some discussions of potential reductions in our budget that we feel we can sustain. Even though it's never easy to make a cut, we feel that we can still move forward and maintain our programmatic offerings as we head into the next budget year. We also looked at potential savings that we could, we could account for in the budget, as well as we looked at what we had talked about in some restructuring in our technology infrastructure as we go through the bond, and we also have to support that throughout the district, modifying our staffing structure. And then also, last year, we were under the assumption that we would, at the end of this year, have to start implementing online testing. That requirement has not gone away, it's been delayed by one year. So in order to try to dedicate over 5% of our budget, which is what the state indicates we should be doing in order to meet these new demands, that would be untenable sort of stretch on the budget. So we've been trying to address it by looking at a $200,000 technology boost to the budget each year for roughly the next three years, starting last year, and we were successful in that last year. So this is year two of that, as well as trying to make sure that we have some summer help. At the end, we have an adjusted baseline budget of 93.6 expenditures, our revenues didn't really change, so our gap sort of went up slightly. And then, again, we have the possible levy and the possible fund balance. All the while, the state aid was not really finalized at this point. Then we went to 319, which is our third presentation, which was O&M and Athletics. Really, in O&M, there, we have relied on O&M, our operations and maintenance, for many of the past years to make reduction after reduction after reduction, that there virtually is not much left to make, and they've delayed and deferred equipment purchases to the tune of about, back to almost, some in 1999, 2004, equipment that we are working on, which is starting to cost more to repair and maintain versus purchases. So there was a request for about $175,000 in equipment to replace outdated equipment. This changed our expenditure line, our revenue line really didn't change, and our gap basically grew to go budget year to budget year and address the issues that we have by making some of the reductions in the program to about $5 million. Of course, that $5 million still does not take into effect the amount of levy or the amount of fund balance or the amount of additional aid that could be potentially relied on from the state. Well, I'm happy and I'm sad to say both on the state aid update, is that the state budget is on time for a fourth year in a row. Can I say it's a good budget? I can't say that it's a good budget for education. Can I say it's a bad budget? I can't say it's a bad budget for education as well, just because there's uniquenesses in it, because the other side of the budget could have been much worse for public education. The long and short in, in regards to aid, they did propose a $1.1 billion increase to aid, but I would tell you, it's not an increase. They proposed adding 1.1 billion to the aid formula of the 1.6 billion they were taking away from schools every year. So I can't complain that it's not going to assist us in our budget, it will, but it doesn't assist us to the level that we should be at in relationship to some of our higher needs districts, and we hope that that won't play out in the future. But currently, our foundation aid from our initial projections would go up an additional $215,000 from what we initially reported in our opening budget. Our gap elimination would be reduced from about $3.5 million to about $3.1 million, and we'd gain additional support from the state of $359,000. And some of our expense-based aids also yielded a little, but very slight, increase of about $6,000 for a total adjustment to our budget of about $580,000. One of my worries, and I want to reiterate what Ms. Lenhart said, is that it is wonderful that they chose to address the high needs. There are certainly many that need the funding. But my major concern, and I, I say some of these things for the record for perpetuity because that camera's here, I'm concerned that if they addressed the high needs last year, almost with 70% of the money, and cut the GEA tremendously last year, and they did it again this year, to the point, most high needs districts, GEA was cut by almost 50%, that if they do it like they put in the budget, that it will be done next year. If they follow the same formula, we would probably assume the same type of change, but at the end of next year, there's nothing left to cut in the high needs district. And people would say, why is that important? Well, if I was the political person, I would sit there and say, we've taken and addressed the most neediest districts across the state. It's time to recalibrate our state aid and cut our losses so that we do not have to hear parents, year after year, saying, reduce the GEA. So my fear is they'll make one foul swoop of the budget acts, reduce it one last time, and say, we're through with it. Whatever's left is never coming back. So we have to be very cautious in our budget projections and preparing going forward. So, like I said, I can't be unhappy that we're getting more support. It's just not enough to meet all of our needs, but we think we have some plans that we're going to introduce tonight. As we go through, one of the things is, in this budget, is there's what's known as the new tax cap and new tax freeze. What that means is in the legislation, if the taxing authority stays within the governor's 2% tax levy limit, then residential property taxpayers will be eligible to receive rebates for any 2014-15 property tax increase if local governments comply with that tax cap requirement of staying within it. I can tell you throughout this, we're planning on staying within it, not because we're forced to, but because it does make sense in this situation, and we also know our community, and we're trying to be supportive on both sides, but maintain a strong educational format. So that's some of the things that you'll hear tonight. Last time, we talked about that there was a major change in the special education budget at BOSI's. We didn't really have all the numbers, we could only go by their percentages, and we announced that it could be somewhere between 100,000 to 300,000. Without the actual expenditures, which we finally received, we were able to calculate what it would now mean for us, and we feel comfortable in putting up from Ms. Johnson's office, that it would probably be an additional increase above what we've already put into the budget to try to give a little room for unexpected move-in and move-outs of our special needs population of about $41,000. So that will be an increase to the budget. However, we've also, going through, looking, are proposing an elimination of 1.0 FTE within the special education, but that is through a position that would be attritioned as it would be vacant due to a retirement. So in a way, one offsets the other, but also aids the budget development. With all of that being considered, state ed, CESS off-states, now we are, before we start tonight, it's important that we give a baseline of where we're at. With the CESS increase, the elimination, and the state aid adjustment, now we have an adjusted baseline budget of $93.7 million, a revenue of around 89, 89.34 million dollars, with a projected budget gap before we start tonight's presentation of around $4.4 million. And if you look at the bottom, we still have whatever our potential levy would be, as well as whatever potential amount of fund balance would be, so the tools are starting to be able to cover this budget. And then we will have the presentation from the instructional components tonight. So tonight is the instructional, K-12 instructional program, and I'd like to introduce our assistant superintendent, Ms. Jody Monroe, to come forward and present that for the board and the community to hear.
Before I begin the presentation, I just want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. Someone told me earlier, the first nice day we have this presentation tonight, so, but I really appreciate everyone being here to support the instructional program. So what I'll begin with is an overview of the departments and the baseline budget in the instructional program that we'll be talking about this evening. And what you see here is essentially the overview of what the instructional program entails, and you can see these are broad categories from which all of the other budget pieces kind of fall under. So you can see, if you look from 2013 to 14 this year, projected for next year, there's a very modest increase from year to year. The one slight increase is, is a little bit higher is in library, and that's simply due to a reclassification code for our onsite coordinator position that used to be under a technology line, so that's now out of the technology and into the instructional program. And this is, again, an overview of the rollover budget from year to year. You can see that the majority of the instructional program budget is in salaries. As I said before, we're a people business, that's what we do, we service children, and that's where the majority of our, our costs are. We don't have a lot of money in equipment, I think. You'll see that there's a slight decline, that's due in part, last year, if you recall, we've talked about this at other budget meetings, the pre-purchasing of supplies that we had done in last year's budget process, and the other operating costs in BOSI's services are kind of everything else that falls within the instructional program for the district. And this breaks it down into salary and position information. We range, you know, from obviously myself and staff to the principals, supervisors, the professional development line, instructional support staff, and those are, these are the categories as to how we develop our budget each year and who's involved in each of these And again, this is just another way to look at it by levels, essentially. We have 75 employees K3, 88 in four through six, on 159 in the seven through 12 grade levels. The one increase I want to just note here is under the professional development. There is an increase there, and that's actually due to the health insurance buyout for the BCTA members that we agreed to in the last contract, although it's an increase in this line item, it's under the other category. There's actually a health, a savings in our health insurance line as a result of that buyout, so that's the reason for the increase here. Now we'll get into enrollment. We get into the budget, obviously, one of the factors we need to always consider is what are, what does our enrollment look like? And those of you who have been involved in the budget process from year to year, there has been slight decreases in our enrollment and projected to continue to decrease over the next several years. So this is our current enrollment for 2013-14, and you can see that our teacher ratios are anywhere from around 20 up to 22. Again, with elementary as well as secondary, you have fluxes, so you might have one class that has 27 or 28, and we could have another section with 18 or 19 student. It really depends on the building, in particular year, how those play out. So currently, this year, we have 85 classroom teachers, this does not include special area teachers, with an overall ratio of 21.84. And these are our projected enrollments for next year, and I say that, you know, with a little caution, because projections are as good as we can project, obviously, we can't anticipate people who move in over the summer and things such as that. So right now, if you look overall, we're looking at a potential reduction of about 75 students at the elementary level for next year, and you can see that all the buildings are going down, anywhere from nine to a high of about 20 students. And the middle school and high school section in staffing gets a little bit more complicated because we're accounting for all of the classroom teachers and the number of students that they service. So essentially, what you're looking at here is, for example, if you look at the first line in art, we have 2.6 art teachers assigned to the middle school, and there's 1,094 students scheduled over the course of the year. Remember, in middle school, the art classes are 10 weeks long, so they're not servicing 1,094 students at any 1,094 students at any one time. So the student-teacher ratio is every, so that 105.2 essentially represents one classroom teacher, and that's the number of students they service over the course of the year. So you can see there's a range. There are obviously the AIS teachers who do remedial work would have a lower student-teacher ratio. In some of the other classes, you can see that health is a little bit higher. And these have gotten a little bit higher due to the fact that we've had significant faculty reductions over the last four years. And again, the high school is representing the same. It's a little bit different format, but you have the same information here. For example, again, take art, we have 6.3 faculty members, and you can see their student-teacher ratio over the course of the year is just over 102 students that they service. Again, there's a range, so you'll see that that may vary from year to year, or depending upon the staffing that we have reduced. And we do look at, obviously, the high school. We base some of this on student requests from year to year as well. So as I mentioned, we've had, and many of you are much aware of this, a lot of reductions over the course of the last four years. And I'd like to say there would be no reductions again this year, however, that's not the case. With that said, however, there's still needs that we have in the district, and there's still things that we need to consider for our students. So some of these additions, we feel are a need that we've been neglecting for a couple of years now, and we'd like to be able to add these to the budget if we're able to. For example, at the elementary, if you recall, a few years ago, we reduced the math AIS position. We used to have 2.4 faculty assigned to that, and we reduced that, I think, two or three years ago. We do definitely have a need. We're not able to service all of the, particularly our primary students who need additional support. And really, those are the students for RTI. You really want to be impacting early on so that the gap doesn't grow. So we're suggesting that we add a .4 elementary math RTI teacher to help. We currently have 2.0 teachers assigned. For them to try and service five building is really challenging. The next area of need, obviously, is the same issue, really, at the middle school. We used to have two teachers to service AIS for English, for reading and writing. In looking at the numbers and the students, we're currently unable to service, or we're only able to service for a very limited amount of time. We're, again, proposing to look at a .4 increase in that area at the middle school. The .1 allocation for technology is in regards to the presentation the board saw a month or so ago about offering an accelerated option for technology for 8th grade students. At the time, Ms. Gagne had indicated that technically, even though it's a full-year course, that with the staffing, they would look at some other reductions, and we would need to add a .1 FTE and be able to offer that course for students in 8th grade. And the last thing, if you recall, several years ago, we cut field trips, so we have no field trip money. Parents have been great, the PTAs have been great about funding that, but there is, there's real value in being able to take students out to things and make that part of the curriculum. This by no means would restore the entire allocation we had in the past, but it would least allow us to provide the schools with something to be able to provide opportunities for students. And this dollar amount was based on a per pupil allocation, and we did that on $7 for elementary students, $5 for middle school students, and $4 for high school students. So we would like to be able to offer that back to the buildings if we're able to. So the total additions is just over $90,000.
Jody, before you go on.
Sure.
How's it a .1? Because the teachers teach five periods, so you would think it'd be a .2 at minimum?
Correct, but the technology classes in 7th and 8th grade are 20 weeks. And looking at the staffing that we have and looking at how we would assign those, we're able to do it with only a .1. It is a .2 course, that is a full-year course, but the 20-week courses are not, so that's where we.
So they only do their, like, part of the year then?
Correct. That class would be full year, but one of the other 20 weeks we would not run. We'd run it, but the classes would be a little bigger, which is what we've been doing.
Jody, what was the field trip allocation before it got cut? Do you remember?
I think it was, don't quote me, but I thought it was around 48,000 or so, 46,000 for
So adding the math and the English RTI position, so does that fully address the need that exists? Or is that just a little bit of a Band-Aid that's just gonna?
I think the .4 will address the math needs at the elementary school. Again, it always depends on your student population. We're not using the state test for much of this because we haven't really got good information, but we do have other diagnostic tools. At the middle school, based on some of the after-school programs and the home base and some of those, we're hoping this will address the needs of all those students, but we're trying to be fiscally responsible and see if this is enough staffing based on the numbers. We think it is, but, you know, I guess we'll have to see how the schedule works out.
And are these kids that we catch, like, right in kindergarten and kind of plug them in?
Well, that's the goal. In elementary, for example, we have, you know, reading teachers that service those students beginning in K, and classroom teachers do a lot of the interventions as well. That's the intent of RTI, to have a combination approach. But with the math, we've really been unable to do that. And, you know, especially with the young children, a lot of it is really skill development and not being able to provide some interventions when we can, we feel will just broaden that gap as the math gets harder and they get older.
Actually, can I ask one more question about that? And are you, is there a perception among the teachers that some of the Common Core pressure has created a larger need for some of that? I mean, has that changed?
Well, I think obviously there's been, for example, in the Common Core, specifically in math, there's been some things that have been helpful in regards to having to teach as much content in a year, but it's very specific as to what the expectation is for students to be able to demonstrate mastery of certain skills. So there's things that have been shifted down. There's also been things that have shifted up. So I think certainly the Common Core has been more specific about what students should be expected to do at certain times. You know, not all students are able to do that, obviously. You know, kids can develop at their own rate, but we still have an obligation as a district, if they're not where they should be, to try and provide some kind of remediation for those students.
So you are pulling those students that need that into those programs?
Right. There can, it can be a push-in model, it can be a pull-out. Some of the special education teachers provide that remedial support. So it's a combination approach. And so now I'll get into the reductions, which one of these years, it would be really nice if we didn't have to contend with these. And I want to just talk about a little bit about the rationale for some of these reductions. When I say they're related to enrollment, and I'll talk a little bit about enrollment as we get further into the presentation, they're based on enrollment in trying to be fiscally responsible and looking at what we can do and make sure kids are getting what they need to the degree possible. But with the amount of reductions we've had already, I don't want to sugarcoat it and make it seem like class sizes have not gone up and these reductions are easy to take. In the elementary, we are seeing a loss of about 75 students. In looking at that, in looking at current numbers, again, we're using this based on projections, but our projections have been fairly accurate in the past. We would look to have a reduction of classroom teachers by two, and based on our current numbers in sectioning, we would look, one of those classroom teachers would be reduced at Eagle, and one would be reduced at Glenmont. Again, that's evolving because we're still doing registration, and we'll still be doing that over the summer. But right now, based on the information we have, that's where the most appropriate reductions would occur.
So you got chart that you showed earlier for the elementary numbers?
Mm-hmm.
Is that we utilize this stuff?
Right. Although, you know, you have to be, even though the numbers may not be, that may not be the highest reduction, it also depends on how many sections they have this year, and then where those grade levels transfer. Because remember, our class size guidelines that we try to stick to, if change each year, the older kids get, the larger the class size guidelines are. So it's not directly related to those numbers, but based on our sections and what they have currently, that's where the numbers make the most sense, as of today. Also, in grade six, the middle school is seeing a loss of about 70-some students. If you remember a few years ago, when we were making reductions, one of the things in the middle school we did was we created an expanded team. And that expanded team essentially is on one house Mohawk. And with the reduction of the students going into the middle school, we would propose that we reduce one of those grade six teams. There's two extra on what we call the expanded team, or some of you may remember, years ago, there was a half-team. So that would be a .8 reduction there and another .2 in math. And it gets a little tricky with grade six, because grade six, even though it's in the middle school, is actually an elementary tenure area. And so when you, we look at reductions, we not only have to look at the grade six issue, but who we have that can actually teach grade six. So that's why in grade six, where I have Core, it's got math, science, social studies, and foreign language. It seems really odd, but foreign language is actually an elementary tenure area if it's a grade six position. In the math, the additional math, the .2, is to complete that 1.0 grade six reduction. I won't get into all the specifics of tenure and seniority, but that's the rationale for that. The art, music, and PE reductions are all related to the classroom reductions. In elementary school, we base art sections, music, and PE on the number of classroom sections that we have. So when we're reducing in those areas, the special areas gets reduced as well. And the same would be two for grade six. If we're eliminating a team, those 10-week subjects that are associated with that team also get reduced. So that's the reason for those reductions. In addition, in art, the high school .2 reduction is related to student requests. Are down overall in some of those art classes, so there's a .2 reduction there. And PE, the other high school .2 reduction is related to the AD position when we hired that mid-year. We didn't make any shifts there. In ESL in the middle school, the .2 reduction is based on the number of students that will be in ESL. Again, that's related to the current projections that we have. We're not sure if we get other students over the summer, if that may change, but that's been fairly accurate in the past. And the high school reductions for foreign language in ELA are also based on student request and sectioning and looking at those numbers as well. So if we were to take all of those reductions, you're looking at about just over $341,000 in savings to the district. And this is not so much a budget issue, but it potentially, there are some savings. And quite honestly, we need to present this at this time, simply because we need to know where to go with the students for next year. We've had a lot of discussions about the Chinese program, the ability to sustain the program, and it's been a challenge. We've had a lot of turnover in teachers, and we, when we began the program, the intent was to grow the program so that it was equivalent to French and Spanish. We had hoped that in 6th grade and 7th grade, we would end up with two sections, and we would be hiring two to three Chinese teachers to ensure that students who are Chinese would have the same opportunities as their counterparts in French and Spanish. That has not happened for a variety of reasons. And quite honestly, for our students in high school, I feel like we're doing them a disservice when they get to 10th grade and there's no longer an option for them except to change languages. We haven't had enough students to request those upper-level Chinese courses, but we have maybe 10 to 12 that would continue. The other issue is we're not able to find a part-time Chinese teacher to be able to teach those courses. So there's a lot of issues with it, and I feel that the students really are not getting the same language program that their counterparts are in Spanish and French. So in order for us to kind of move forward, we're suggesting that grade six, we would not offer Chinese. What we would do with our students in grade seven and eight is we would encourage them to take an accelerated Spanish course. These students are good language students, are good students, and we feel that they could, with an accelerated program, could get on track for their region's requirement and be able to continue with AP offerings or college credits in that language. If they wanted to do French, we would support them in that. Again, they're good language students. We would provide them with some enrichment and opportunities for them to kind of get caught up, and they could do that as well. The students that, in grade nine and 10, are really the students that they need to get those requirements in for the Regents or advanced Regents diplomas that I'm sure they're looking for. Ideally, we would look to find a part-time teacher. We have not had luck with that in the past. If we were, we may be able to partner with another district if they have a part-time teacher, or through a coaster with BOSI. We are exploring that as a possibility. We've also been in touch with some public high schools that have online courses for Chinese. It would be the equivalent of what we would provide. And we're also looking with, working with a couple local school districts for distance learning options. So that's why I don't want to be overly optimistic that there would be much of a budget savings with this. There might be some, but really, there's some costs associated with distance learning and online option, and also providing students who are currently in the program with some other opportunities. But we do need to make a decision on where we're going with the Chinese program so we can inform the parents, we can inform the students, and help them make a choice as to which direction they would like to go. Do you want me to go on and come back to this?
Does the board want to address that now, or do you want to see the rest of the presentation?
I'll see the rest of the presentation.
Presentation.
We'll come back.
So in looking at the overall budget, I do want to address, you know, some of the issues of the past reductions I mentioned earlier regarding enrollment. We have lost over 70 faculty members in positions in the last several years since 2010. What that has resulted in is larger class sizes at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school. We had definitely fewer high school electives or class sections. That doesn't mean necessarily we don't still offer the same classes, but we offer fewer of them. So we're closing more students out of those classes. Obviously, the less individualized instruction is why we're requesting some additional support for RTI and AIS. We have some remedial groups that have 10 to 12 students in them. That's not an effective model for remediation and really helping students get caught up. Obviously, we also have increased stress for staff, and not just with budget, but also we've had APPR, RTI, a lot of impact, and teachers trying to do a lot more with larger classes and dealing with that. And we haven't really been able to add any new programs. We have this year, just in the high school, about 30 classes that we have enough students to run courses, but we don't, we're not adding additional staffing to be able to offer those to students. And just to kind of reiterate that, you can see since 2010, we do have declining enrollment, and that's been projected for a while. But you can see that the enrollment decline has been just over 7%, but our instructional staff has been close to 15%. So while enrollment is dropping, our decrease, our percentage decrease in faculty is dropping at, you know, a higher rate than the enrollment is. And at this time, questions the board has?
I have a question. If you go back to that slide of the impact...
If you go back to that slide of the impact with the six boxes, that is a little scary because all of those things together kind of spell a little bit of trouble. You know, we just had some great presentations of the excellence in academics of, you know, Odyssey programs and the Merit Scholars, and, you know, it's pretty impressive. Yet, you know, are we looking at this as a little bit of a time bomb issue? You know, I kind of worry about that. You know, you see a lot of sort of anecdotal stuff out there that public school teachers are really feeling a lot of pressure and stress. And, you know, part of it is the Common Core and the APPR kind of new pressure. But I think the other part of it is, you know, basically your whole presentation would kind of, you know, what was really had to happen because of budget cuts. And I just wonder, are those adds, you know, what are they going to mitigate? Or, you know, are we just sort of putting a finger in the dyke here? I mean, what's your?
I think that certainly they will, the adds will help. They're not going to resolve all of the issues that we've had. We've dealt with a lot of budget reductions, you know, and there's things up here that have been impactful, you know, or things beyond this that are impactful that I, we haven't even addressed. We've cut a lot of co-curricular offerings for students. Teachers have been, and staff have been great. People have stepped up and really done a lot to counter some of these, because the reality is, is that educators really care about kids, and so they want them to have a lot of these opportunities. But at some point, when you get into class sizes that are, you know, 30 or 35, or if you're looking at revio groups of 10 to 12, yes, will the adds help? But at the same time, they're not going to resolve all of the problems that we've had for four years, you know, going on five years of budget reductions. So will they help? Yes.
A little, but not.
Will they solve the problem?
Right. But not, yeah, probably enough.
No.
Right.
You should go back to the Chinese.
Yeah, we'll go back to the Chinese now. Anyone have any thoughts on the proposal by Jody?
I just think it's very difficult to, I was very enthusiastic when we established the Chinese program. Certainly, that's one of our, in the global economy, one of our major competitors. And, you know, I think we really thought that this would be a sustainable program, that we'd have the enrollment, we could find the staffing, and obviously, neither has worked out for us. And, you know, my main concern is for the students, especially the ninth and 10th grade students, you know, to find a solution for them so that they can get their credit for taking Chinese. But it's very uncomfortable to be at this point with the program.
I agree. It's very discouraging. I know that Dr. Bowles worked really hard trying to build the program and maintain it, and it just seems there's a lot of obstacles for that to really happen.
And Jody, you've checked with other districts around the area, no? I mean, they either have the same issue or they don't offer Chinese.
Right. Yeah, there's very few, and some of them have cut it or reduced it. One of the districts we're looking at, distance learning, has reduced it, but they're looking for a distance learning option potentially because their enrollment is down. So that may be a possibility for our high school students. Again, you've got, does the schedule work? And a lot of those things we need to work through, but.
I think any program we offer, we always want it to be the best we can make it be. And I think we've made a good attempt over the years to try to build this program, and it's just not happening for a variety of reasons. And I think at this point, we may be doing a disservice to the students who are in the program. So I would be in favor of phasing it out and helping the students who are in the program right now to complete.
Is the problem to some extent finding certified teachers? Because I remember years ago, I heard a report from one district, and they were using someone who was uncertified. They were very pleased, and they just said that, you know, that's what they were going to do. And I don't know what the state does if it's required.
Well, it's really limited for who's certified. And then if they're a native from China, there's a lot of other things to consider. The government actually wants you to hire a U.S. citizen first, so there's a lot of other pieces to it that get a little bit complicated. But in general, there's very few certified Chinese teachers that, you know, are applying for at least positions around here, and that's probably because there's not a huge market around here as well.
I would definitely agree with what Mike said, and I just want to make sure that we are doing whatever we can for those ninth and 10th graders to make sure they get the requirements.
And this is your recommendation? This is what you feel is the best to do at this point?
At this point.
So I guess the sense from the board is yes.
Okay.
Move forward with that recommendation to phase it out.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
Thank you.
And again, parents will be notified, and I just want to make sure everybody understands and understands why we.
Parents will be notified, and then we'll be meeting with the students about what their options are.
Excuse me, we do have a, we do have a session where we do let the public speak and address it. You'll have an opportunity at that time? Yep. They'll be coming up right after the board has finished with their discussion of Ms. Monroe's whole presentation.
Thank you, Jody. To continue on with the presentation, we wanted to try to give you the specificity of what was just presented. So going back to our charts that we've already talked about with our expenditures at 93.7, our revenues at 89.3 million, and a gap at 4.04. With the instructional additions, the instructional reductions proposed, we've also tried to go back between last budget meeting and here through our administrative team, and we've looked at where we could potentially make some, and we feel confident that we can make these reductions to the budget and have a tighter budget. In the area of vehicle and liability insurance of a reduction of $75,000. Because of our TRS rate reduction, we can estimate another $70,000 in reductions to the budget there. And because of some, as Jody was talking, our health insurance rates out there, we feel we can now reduce the budget by about $200,000 at this point to help on the expenditure side. Additionally, we were looking at savings on our instructional staff or what's known as breakage, that we've been able to determine over the past couple of weeks, that we will experience an additional breakage of about $120,000. And then also by going through the budget, and we go through it many times throughout the past six to eight weeks, that we have noticed that we've covered sabbaticals in one line, but we also found a double entry in the last budget. So we are adjusting that and taking, instead of funding sabbaticals at 200,000, we're going to take 100,000 out and still fund our sabbatical line, and that will be tightening the budget so that we make sure that we appropriately account for our budgeted items from year to year. In addition, we've been trying to work on our legal fees over the past two years. We've had a higher-than-normal legal fee between retainer and additional charges. We have commenced with all of our negotiations at this point for a while that we feel at this point we can make a reduction, at least confidently at around the $50,000 range. And one of the things is earlier this week, as well as over the past couple of weeks, we've been having discussions with our business office in the town of Bethlehem in regards to the tax billing and collection. For us, where the town of Bethlehem currently undertakes that, we would consider at this point through our discussions that we would be taking that back and utilizing a BOSI service for our tax billing and collections, which would have a cost to the budget. It would have a cost of about $18,000. That, however, does become BOSI's aidable after the first year, so that helps reduce that cost. But in addition, from year to year, although we wish we did not have to say that this is a revenue or a potential revenue, it offsets the cost at BOSI's as well as the aid by penalties that are paid due to late payment of the taxes according to the taxing authority, which annually on average run about $50,000 a year in penalties. Now, if that's lower, we can't count on it, but it's been consistent over many years that it's around that total. So the net cost to the district would be a potential savings of about $32,000, which would be in the budget. In addition, we looked at our tech equipment, where we had $200,000. We're not exactly sure where the state's going to be, but we know they are going to shift to online assessment. That was not addressed in the budget. So we still need to prepare for our obligation as it goes in line at this point currently in 15, 16, until we get word whether or not they're going to delay it. But we feel that because we did some purchasing and strategic positioning last year, that at least if we had to string this out over another year, we would reduce that at this point at $50,000. And then in O and M, although we've requested $175,000, well, at this point, if we had to, looking at our budget picture, we'd probably recommend reducing that by $25,000 at this point until we have some final ability to work with our BOSI's budget and other items on the line item. So that gives you an expenditure reduction with all the work that we've been doing to tighten our budget, as well as looking at our enrollment issues and our scheduling issues, down to a year-to-year budget growth to 92.82 million. We would have potential revenues now being adjusted to 89,392 million, and that would leave a potential gap of our budget of 3.430 million dollars. Remember, we said we have tools at the bottom. We have our potential levy, and we have our potential fund balance. We no longer have the tool of state aid because that is finalized at this point. So what it does is it leaves us with a couple of questions. How do we close the remaining gap of 3.4 million dollars? Well, on the screen, you basically have three tools remaining. We have given you a host of reductions, which we wish we didn't have to make, but without the gap elimination restoration, there's really no alternative. But we have our maximum allowable tax levy of up to 3.12 percent. Which we know would levy up to about 1.9. Whoa. Who's using a cellphone? Do you know what that is? Okay. Using 1.295 million in fund balance, with everything that we presented, additions and reductions, using 1.25 million in fund balance, and using the maximum allowable tax levy limit of 3.12, which still allows every homeowner to be eligible for the freeze by the governor. That would leave us more work to do over the next week or the next couple of weeks, depending on what the board decides, of coming up with an additional amount of reduction of $220,000. That's sort of the topic. The bottom diagram basically is the same exact scenario, except we're increasing the amount of fund balance we're using to about 1.375 million dollars. That's roughly the equivalent of about 11 percentile points, or 13 percentile points on the tally, which would mean we could potentially propose a levy, and again, we don't mean propose it, the rate's set, above 2.99 percent. We didn't pick any number. That's a psychological number below three percent, I mean, to be honest. But we still have the reductions of 2.2, $220,000, which we feel as an administrative team, we'll be able to meet that goal by our next meeting. One of the questions that the board's going to have to look at is where do you want our financial plan to be? As an administrative team, we feel these are probably the best position to position ourselves for the following year. The reason why is if we increase the use of fund balance, we're going to have to have something to pay for it next year. And really, we're still above what we said as our plan three years ago, so we're coming closer to come in line with that. Yes, you could increase the fund balance and lower the levy. Sooner or later, that fund balance has to be paid for. So in a way, you have to sort of balance that as you come off of it between levy, reductions, or fund balance. In our reductions, we feel we will not be proudly going into any other staffing that would be impacting program. We don't think it would really be staffing in our other $220,000 in reductions. And we feel that the additions and reductions would be appropriate at this time, pending everything that you've heard, and allow us to strengthen the district a little as we move forward, put some things back in that we do need, as well as address trying to find a balance to maintain what is Bethlehem education. So that's where we are with both positions. And really, what it does is amount to, is really the budget must be balanced. We're the only budget in the United States that must be balanced when we go out to the voters, and we're the only budget that is subject to final voter approval. So here is our final picture of the adjusted expenses budget year to budget year, our adjusted revenue budget year to budget year, and we must close now that 3.43 million-dollar gap, the remaining tools that we have. And really, we're in question for corrections from the board. That's the ultimate for us. If we know how much fund balance you are okay with us using, or if our recommendation is where it is, it sort of tells where the levy would be. And if you're not okay with that levy, then you're going to have to tell us that we need to make more reductions or not. We've given you a couple of proposals that we feel are probably reasonable. The reason why we say that is over the past 10 years, our budget, budget year growth is on the lowest side of that factor on a 10-year average. I think last year we showed it, and we'll have that at our next presentation. Additionally, the potential levies that we're talking about, although nobody likes them, and being a homeowner in Bethlehem, I certainly have to be concerned about that as well. But what happens is that is the lowest levy we've put out since my tenure here. It will still have some impact on our staff, but it won't necessarily change our programming and the opportunities that we still provide, but it might alter some in the way that we operate. So those are some of our discussions. We're available, Judy and the candidates over here, Sal's over here, Jody and myself. We're ending the discussion for the quarter and questions.
One thing we haven't mentioned, people have received letters recently in the town after being, after having their homes reassessed, and there are a lot of people that are.
Systems, Donald.
Oh, the systemism. Anyhow, there are a lot of residents in the community that are very concerned about taxes because of being reassessed, mostly to higher levels.
If I can speak on that, both Judy Kiefer and myself are trying to schedule a meeting with our interim. don't want the community to think it's the school board's position or my position, it's just I can explain it the best I can. And that's within this position of reassessment, roughly, from what we have been informed, roughly fifty to fifty-two, fifty-three percent of the assessments went down. Roughly between seventy-five percent either virtually stayed close to the same or went down. That's sort of the dynamics. And roughly over that seventy-five percent, or about a quarter of the assessments, potentially went up. The issue with reassessment is that it depends on the total valuation of the entire parcels of what makes up that organization or that entity. If the total valuation went up and there was growth in that evaluation, usually what happens, and I've worked with the guard associates, which are doing this in the past in my former property in Centon Yard, when the total valuation goes up, the rates go down because you're dividing that same rate over a bigger valuation or bigger pot. So that, I think, will always cause confusion out there. We need to emphasize that and we need time to get the full numbers so that we can.
Well, I was wondering whether the total valuation, total valuation of the parcels in the town of Bethlehem, because they're the only ones that were reassessed, went up, so that would be a different number to use than we already had, you know, that, you know, Judy, you'd already given us, you know, that would help us along.
Yeah. When there is an increase in the overall assessment, and I'll have examples on the next PowerPoint presentation to show you exactly how it works, but as Dr. Douglas noted, when the values go up, the tax rates go down. I think that the assumption that people tend to make is that the rates don't change, so if they see an increase in their assessments, they assume they're going to be paying more in taxes. And by how the rates are calculated, that's not the case. When the assessment goes up, the rates do go down. So, you know, in theory, if everybody rises at the same level, the impact is only the impact from the increase in the tax levy. So we'll give a few examples and walk people through that.
And I think that's important from our meeting with the interim assessor. That will help our next presentation to be able to explain that better as it relates to the schools portion of the taxing authority.
Because the important part is also, you have to know what, how the reassessment affected just the Bethlehem School District residents, because overall, the town could have gone up, but depending on where those properties lie, within either Ravina, Queen and Selkirk, or Gilderland or us. So that's the picture we need to know is specific to the Bethlehem District.
The Bethlehem School District, and then the equalization rates between the towns as well.
So we're gathering that information and let me have more specifics.
It's gone to a hundred percent, so.
A hundred percent is not always a hundred percent. I mean, somebody could actually be at a hundred and ten percent. It doesn't make sense, but we have to work those issues out. And hopefully, I know John Clarkson, and I'm not putting him on the, hi, John. John was instrumental in talking to us about this, preparing for tonight as well, and I hopefully did justice to what our conversation was, so. So we're trying to be proactive in that as well.
Well, I was just concerned about, you know, citizens not understanding and then, you know, seeing our numbers.
No, I certainly understand. So the questions on fund balance and potential levy, where's the board thinking, discussion? It's your time, not mine.
Usually, you have a slide of what's in our fund balance at this point. Do you have a slide of what we have in it?
I did not bring that with, but we're, right now, we're just under, we're about three-point-six percent of our fund balance, so it's around three-point-four million dollars.
And we never want to drop below two percent, and we can't go over four percent.
That's for your unrestricted portion.
Yeah. That's why we feel that by making the step off like we wanted to last year, we would have been in stronger position this year. Because of the aid, because of our reductions, it works out that we can make a stronger step. We're not exactly where we wanted to be at one-point-one. And then I think in our long-range plan, we wanted to be somewhere around seven-fifty in next years, but it gets us closer to show that we are addressing the issue.
So, just that slide. So with using your examples there, what would the amount of the fund balance we'd be using, like what would that leave us at?
We would still be, yeah, we would still be in that appropriate range between two and four percent. So we'll have the actual numbers for this year flowing into the fund balance. The anticipated use in next year's budget will come out, and we still will be under that four percent. It'll be a healthy range. I think it's a positive to step down the use of that fund balance. We'll be going before the rating agencies again as we go out to market with the capital bond, so I think that is very positive.
That could potentially be another positive for us on the financial side as well.
To reduce that reliance on it.
One of the things we have to be careful of, that the board should be aware of, we've reduced it, but also, we're tightening the budget. So there may not be the money to recover and put back into the fund balance at the end of the next year. So it's important that as we're tightening the budget, we've got to get off of the fund balance as quickly as possible, because the two sort of go hand in hand.
Have you now presented all reductions that you're recommending?
All the reductions according, I mean, we have about two-hundred-and-twenty thousand more that we would probably make, but we've got to look at our BOSI's requests. We've got to look at fine-tuning some of the other budgets that are there, because it's still, as we go through, by this year, we moved the scheduling process forward for special ed, as well as for the high school, the middle school, and even the elementaries, to try to make sure that we have better, accurate requirements and requests in, so that we have a much stronger positioning of what we actually need to offer our educational program. So we feel that, you know, we're probably not looking at anything other than that, Jody. I mean, from our discussions, we don't look at any other educational reductions on the instructional side. We may have, we may have some more on the budgetary side. That's where we're really trying to focus. Potentially, maybe the technology side, but we need to see, we need to finalize our BOSI's picture, which happens over the next couple of weeks.
Because when I look at, there's not a single reduction in what I consider support kind of stuff. It's all directly dealing with kids. There's no clerical person. There's not the people that photocopy all day. It's not hall monitor. It's not that kind of stuff. And I understand that you need a strong foundation, but I can't believe that there's nothing that way, that you're bare bones there. I understand with attrition that makes this, but to take a sixth-grade teacher, but then have to replace for remedial English in the middle school seems like you're taking from one and filling in from the other, and...
Well, we, in a way, you're saying it correctly. We are experiencing some enrollment changes that were increasing our strength in one area and decreasing our opportunity in the other, but yet, are we really decreasing an opportunity because the enrollment's not there? So that's going to be plus.
But keeping the class sizes the same would be better toward not meeting remedial than keeping the class sizes, you know, lowering them would be better in terms of probably not needing as much remedial, potentially.
I agree, but the mandates are still there that we have to try to help some of our neediest learners, and that's the RTI piece.
No, I agree. I think that remedial needs to be there. I'm just saying, are we going to need more next year because we're losing people in the middle school? And is that really where we want to go? I mean, I just, it's surprising to me that there's nothing on here, other than the social worker and the teacher, and that's just surprising.
The, I can only say, Dr. Navarro, a lot of this is what we've been looking at over the past three years. We have made reductions in all of those areas. We will continue to look at them. This is our best position right now, we think, going forward to be able to do it. In that two-twenty, we may have to look, because, you know, we do have to look at, when we reduce at the elementary, is there some support issues there? I can't say that at that point. That's some of our fine-tuning in the budget. But we're relatively close at this point. I mean, if we look at it, we have made reductions. We have some of the lower, lowest ratio. We cut over, what was it? Was it eighty? I'm trying to remember from two years, eighty-five aides, two years ago? Yeah. Twenty-five, I'm sorry. We had, we had it in that big plan, almost up to eighty-five. We reduced eighty-five there. Some people, you know, out in the budget talk, reduce another administrator. We have the highest administrative ratio in the entire capital region, the suburban council, that we are aware of, and we still have to perform the functions at each of our levels one way. Support and instructional are all important, and I know our instructional value the support that they can get. So I think this is our best projection through each of the departments at this point, and we'll have to look at it as we go forward.
Well, Jody, what are the numbers? I mean, they've taken out that sixth-grade team. Are...
There's seventy, there's about seventy-five less kids going into sixth grade.
So it shouldn't really change the size of the other teams?
No, it's just that one team in sixth grade.
Right, of reduction, so class size, it shouldn't be affected.
Right. The rest of the teams will stay the same. Seventh grade, eighth grade in, there'll still be one extra, kind of a half of a half expanded team. Sixth grade.
Okay. Yeah.
I worry about a similar kind of issue as Kate on the remedial side, and I just worry that if there's not enough resources going in on that side, you know, we pay for it later. So, which is why I asked kind of the question, is that enough? You know, it's my understanding, we don't catch the math remedial kids until second grade, and, you know, what's the value of capturing the first graders in math to kind of give them that additional bump? So it's, you know, theoretical questions like that. We don't really know the answer to that. I can only imagine it would be a benefit to capture them earlier and pull them in. So that's just one comment. The other one I want to ask, though, is there's sort of two pictures that give you a specific data point for both the fund balance number and the tax levy number. And there's, there's room in between to go up or down on each that aren't articulated in the slide. In other words, what if you did a tax levy at three-point-zero-six percent and you, I mean, assume the board has prerogative...
This is like a three-legged stool now. You touch one, you affect each of the others.
Right, right. No, I understand, but these numbers are not chosen for some significance that we don't, that I don't know.
Every, every one, one-hundredth of a percentile is roughly about six-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty dollars. So every tenth, tenth of a percentage is sixty-one-thirty.
Right, so they're swiggling.
We have that. It's like, if you notice, between the fund balance from one to the other, that would equate to the thirteen percentile point. It's about eighty-three thousand dollars, I think eighty, eighty thousand dollars, a jump. We're comfortable in either one of those, but, you know, that's just our recommendation. The board ultimately decides. If you decided more fund balance and lower the tax rate, I would offer my advice, and I would advise against that at this point, because the only thing you have to go forward is how you build for the future for yourself.
Right, no, I understand.
If you wanted more reductions, I'm going to tell you from our staff, more reductions than that, we're going to bite program. We have no other choice, one way or another, whether it's in the support side or it's on the instructional side. We've tried to, over the past three years that I've been here and over the past five years, they've tried to take everything from away from the bone as possible. You're at, you're pretty much on the precipice of the bone, depending on what happens with the state budgets in the future. That's why the gap elimination was so important. Remember, look at our discussion of what we're doing right now. If we were funded fully with three-point-one million dollars, we'd be talking about, I could zero out almost all those numbers, I'd just have to find three-hundred thousand dollars in reductions, and we're done. But that's why the discussion, and we wanted the viewpoints of these two, so that you can see when you adjust one or the other. And this is from budget year to budget year, so we feel that we've tried to do what we've been asked by the board to give you a fiscally responsible budget, as well as a prudent one that meets some financial planning on the long term, and then we'll propose those on our final meeting.
Judy, looking forward towards next year's tax cap calculation, are there any implications if we go with the two-point-nine-nine versus the three-point-one-two?
There is a provision within the tax cap regulations that provide for a carryforward of unused tax levy, but the way they've structured it practically, we would not be able to take advantage of that. So the implication is if you go at the two-nine-nine, that's a decision that you will not be able to recoup in a later year.
And that's what, remember, that's what we did last year. We, that was my first question when we, hey, we've got this carryover, so whatever the tax levy is, we can put that. First thing she did was shake her head, no. The convolutedness of the formula actually almost eradicates it.
You basically don't get the benefit of all of the other exemptions as part of that. You're looking at the, remember the two separate slides I had showing the various calculations? You stop at the first slide, and it's, you mathematically can't get to that number in order to take advantage of that carryforward, so.
Anyone else at this time?
I'll speak my, my piece here. I guess what you're presenting to us is your best recommendations for reductions. You'll look for another two-hundred-and-twenty thousand, potentially.
We feel confident we can find that two-hundred-and-twenty thousand either way.
Okay.
Not affecting the instructional program, though. Not faculty, no.
Correct.
Be able to, right, be able to offer comparable program that we currently do.
Yep.
Judy, you're, you're comfortable if we used one-million-three-hundred-seventy-five-thousand of the fund balance?
Yes. Yes.
Personally, I say we try to go as the lowest possible tax increases as we can for the residents. I mean, with the reevaluation, people, it's going to, a lot of people are going to be affected differently by it. Some people are going to see more than, you know, if we go to the maximum, you're going to see more than a three-point-one-two percent increase in your taxes because your assessment went up or whatever, so.
And it all depends on the equalization rate and how that all plays out. We can only go by the data that a lot, I mean, roughly seventy-five percent should see really virtually no change from year to year, except what the new rates are going to be, and potentially less. We just, until we can put that bill in front of somebody and know, that's when we're truly going to know the full impact of it.
So I guess, I would say, try to go with the lowest possible tax increase.
Like around the two-nine-nine with the one-three-seven-five.
I mean, that's my...
I would be in agreement with that, too. I just want to make sure those cuts that you find don't affect the rest of the programs, you know, if you can get them out of the BOSI stuff and stuff like that.
No, I think, I think, I think we're, we have a high confidence, confidence level in being able to do that, because we had those discussions over the past couple of days. We just need to wait to get some final numbers and have a, have a time to sit down.
I would agree with Diana, Matt, that going with the lower levy is good, and, you know, certainly thinking forward to the vote, there's a psychological benefit to being below three percent.
So I mean, that's what the, the tax rate will be, if the tax rate is equal to tax levy, I mean, it's not always the same.
Yeah, the rate always, like, for the past two years, one levy, if we had a levy, a potential levy that we suggested, I think the first year was like three-point-eight-nine. When the EAC rates and everything came out, it actually went out to the public as three-point-seven-one. And like last year, the town of New Scotland's, I think, was point-oh-eight-nine or something because of valuations and changes from the year. So until we have all that information, we can only give you our best estimate according to what we know with the data. And we'll, we'll have that definitely for the twenty-second for budget.
Well, we'll have the estimate. Again, those final assessed values aren't going to be determined until later in the year. Yeah, after the grievance period, so.
The grievance ends May twenty-seventh, so luckily, that's after the budget vote, not the day before, like in past, so.
But all things being equal, having that levy at two-nine-nine, it should be in that vicinity. I don't think we're talking significant shifts in the equalization rate, so again, that's what we're going to gather additional information on, and we'll give you the best information we have at the time, at the next meeting.
For the time being, I can live with that. The two-point-nine-o.
Two-point-nine.
I'm thinking about it. Well, I'm not going to vote on anything tonight, right?
No, just get in direction. As a board, we need direction.
Yeah, after the grievance period.
The grievance ends May twenty-seventh, so luckily that's after the budget vote, not the day before, like in pass, so.
But all things being equal, having that levy at two-nine-nine, it should be in that vicinity. I don't think we're talking significant shifts in the equalization rate, so again, that's what we're going to gather additional information on, and we'll give you the best information we have at the time at the next meeting.
Okay. For the time being, I can live with that. The two point nine-nine.
Two point nine.
I'm thinking about it. Well, I'm not going to vote on anything tonight, right?
No, just get the direction. As a board, we need direction to make a final budget recommendation.
No, understood, understood. I still, I understand the symbolism of a two point nine-nine. You know, the flip side is you draw...
We could use the eighty thousand dollars.
You draw more out of the fund balance that, you know, isn't like a freebie. It's, you know, something you have to...
It's like the Fram oil filter. Sooner or later, you're going to pay me, is the old...
Right, so, you know...
But we're still on the higher end of that. If that's at three point four, three point five percent, and we can only go, you know, up to four.
Yeah, I'd also like to know
It was three-seven-one.
More about the pain-free two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Oh, no, I, I mean, I understand that. I can just tell you, we have, we have some other areas that we can look in, tightening some of the things we said, whether it's in legal fees as well, but we have a couple areas in the budget, because they're BOSI service-related, that we have to do our final commitments.
Right.
Well, now when we're looking at it, we may shift that. We would have to do the calculation on the Chinese program. So instead of just rattling off numbers, we want to take, have a little time to finalize it. But if we know that if we came back to the board with what we were just talking about, that's pretty much going to be our recommendation, and that's your final meeting. The question is then really comes, do you need the meeting on the eighth or not? Because we feel we can deliver what you're asking at one more meeting. And I know there's some
Right.
Issues on whether or not everybody can be at the eighth meeting. And I know we try to have all board members here, so the twenty-second would be our target adoption date.
Yeah, we also talked about some ads in other places like athletics, which wasn't a huge number. But, you know, it paid for basically, basically the equivalent of fields for, you know, hockey and golf and bowling. You know, I'd like us to kind of think about the big picture and whether there's any, you know, wiggling between the two that you, you know, you end up in, you know, supporting those at an appropriate level. I mean, you know...
And I would say there's, there's always, depending on the direction from the board, we can pretty much make almost anything happen. The question is the, the consequences of that, because right now with ours, if we're at two-nine-nine and one-three-seven-five, if we wanted to add anything that makes our two hundred and twenty go up, because we're going to have to cut the half.
No, I got it.
Or we're going to have to increase fund balance, cut and keep the levy the same, which has impacts down the road. So we just, we just need to know what the board wants us to do and we'll deliver back a final product.
Well, I think, as I had said at the last meeting, I mean, there were four items for athletics up there. I'm fully supportive of athletics, but there's a lot that weren't up there that are self-funded by other boosters. So I think before we could make an educated decision, we would really want to know the full impact of all the booster donations and, you know, look at it across the board and not, I'm not sure if that's something that Dr. Douglas is...
We are in the process, I know Len Keys, where is he? I know Len, Len is here. But Len is in the process of meeting with all the boosters and trying to record as much of what each booster provides to programs. But remember, we can't just do that with just athletics. We've got to do it with music. We've got to do it with all of our supporting organizations, because we would rather have you know the whole picture, because as soon as you do one, somebody else is going to come and I don't want, I don't want the board ever to be in a position that you're not prepared for that. I know he's met with a majority of them. We're trying to get that report. We've already given the initial one, but that number has gone up. And we also still feel, and I know Tim Manicha, he's back there by John hiding. Tim's been very instrumental in trying to help out with all of our different booster organizations to try to secure as much of the knowledge base there as possible, because you have to understand, some people don't necessarily want to say, well, we gave two hundred dollars here, five hundred dollars here, because that's under that limit. But we really want to know that, because it helps us try to put the true cost
Yeah.
Of what it is that we should be supplying, but right now we're relying on other, other sources to do. So we want that full report. I don't think we'll have it in time for the budget. I mean, it's just, it's very vast, but we have a better idea. I know right now, from last year, I think, Len, correct me if I'm wrong, last year we showed that the boosters with, with the four that you had plus the others, I think contributed about eighty thousand dollars additional. We're already over a hundred and thirty with what he's found. And that's still not everything. So just in one year, it's almost, we've already found that there's about an additional fifty thousand. And that's not even counting all the assistant volunteer coaches that are being paid for that are not necessarily going through the board. But we're trying to clean that up throughout this year, but that is all an additional cost
Right.
That would have to be adhered to. That's going to take at least a couple of months, if not the summer.
Right. So that would be, the coaching piece would be an add at any rate?
Well, that, that depends. The coaching piece would be an add if the board decides to fund the coaches. It's not an add unless the board decides. Any other?
Yeah, Diane.
No, it's, you know, it's not a...
Oh, yeah. And at this point, it's nine o'clock, so we'll take a quick five-minute break so that the PIG students can come up and sign out. And then in five minutes, we'll resume the meeting.
Put your will be stay. Sorry.
Okay. The only thing else is you can hit the future meeting if you want.
Oh, okay. Well, no, future meeting, we got to do the...
The agenda.
Oh, okay. They're messing me up here. They think I have eyes in the back of my head, but I don't. The next meeting is set for April eighth. I know there's been some discussion, should we, should we have that or not? I believe we've kind of informed the public, we're going to have that meeting, and I think we should. We've made some decisions tonight or given some guidance tonight. We've talked about the Chinese program and some other cuts, additional cuts tonight. So I, my position is that we should have the April eighth meeting to have the, any additional public input. Everybody agree with that?
Who's not able to be here?
I know Len can't be here.
Oh, he's okay.
But that's, that's fine.
Yep. So, you turned it off on me. Now I can't...
Yeah, I would definitely agree with that, too, because Charlie won't be here.
Next on the agenda is a recognition of visitors. At this time, it is, this time is set aside for visitors to address the Board of Education on any agenda item. If you'd like to, to address the board, please come forward to the microphone, state your name. Because I know someone had wanted to address us about Chinese, but...
Does this include the budget presentation?
Yeah, this is any agenda item. If it's a non-agenda item, there's another spot at the end of the meeting to do that.
So can I talk about the budget?
Yes. Yeah, we talked about the budget tonight.
Good.
Where were you, Karen, all night? You don't know we talked about the budget?
It's like it's on the agenda. I would just urge the board to keep an open mind about going above the two point nine-nine percent tax increase. I think our community has historically overwhelmingly supported budgets that were even higher than three percent. And I get the part about three point one-two in this sort of fake rebate idea, separate issue. But I think our community would support something above two point nine-nine if they understand what they get for that money. And I think cutting another two hundred and twenty thousand out of the budget is going to be really tough. And I think our community would like to see those things stay and maybe even add in some other things. Thanks.
Karen, the only clarification I would get is that even at the maximum, we still have to do another two hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah, that's on, that's on top of...
Yeah, I just want to clarify that.
The difference would be about eighty thousand dollars between the...
But couldn't you then, the way I understood the math was that you could then use a high, you'd use a higher percentage, higher proportion of the fund balance?
In other words, from our presentation, if we used one point three-seven-five million dollars
Mm-hmm.
And we're at two point nine-nine, we'd still have to reduce another two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
And I'm suggesting our community would pass a budget that goes to three point one-two.
Now, say we went to three point one-two and we didn't change our fund balance, that stayed at one point three-seven-five, now we would have to reduce two hundred and twenty thousand minus eighty thousand that we put back in for that additional levy. So it would be, for, for that, it would either be anywhere from one forty to two-twenty or two-twenty from, and the fund balance would go down. It would be a trade-off of one of the three.
Right. I'm not so concerned about the fund balance, but I do think the community would support a tax increase of more than two point nine-nine.
Can I ask a question, though?